President.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Ed Weber.
Here.
Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Mary Ann Mizilagoya. Steve DeCrane.
Present.
Dave Robbins. Jerry Pucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here.
Okay, and Maggie, are you still an alternate or you're full-time, right?
I'm a full-time right now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so we have in quorum, obviously, and everybody will be participating in voting. Has anybody had a chance, we have before us the minutes of the December 6, 2018 meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at them and want to make a motion as to whether they're acceptable in the current form or need amendments? Mr. Pucci?
I did, I reviewed them and I make a motion that we accept them as written.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Pucci to accept the meetings from December 6, 2018 as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion by anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions, anybody not here? Alderman Tenza and Ms. Harper. Got that in? So, motion passes.
Hi.
Okay. Roger, anything on the communications?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of planning board. We have two items. One is on case number two from a butter that we received on 41 Caldwell Road subdivision plans. Other is an amended memorandum. I included in your packet some information in ordinance 01833 and I had added a sentence to that paragraph of recommended changes and I'll address those when it comes up under other business. And for your information, Commissioner Michael Pedersen left off a co-organized resilient national initiative card, so it gives you a website to log on to, to find out about that process. He might want to speak about it. He attended the same session that we did at Rivera University. Was it how many weeks ago? Three weeks, four weeks? Something like that.
Something like that.
It was very interesting.
Okay.
So Linda carried all the cards here for everyone's...
Thank you.
...use.
All right, thanks. Okay, report a chairman, committee and liaison. Ed, was there anything from the other committees?
Yes. Wednesday, December 19, 2018, the NRPC had a, their quarterly meeting. And we heard the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, 10-year plan process and UPWP updates for FY19 that was approved. Then they had a roundtable discussions. They actually talked about the census of 2020 and the necessity for people to actually get, if people in cities, there's a need for people to take the census and there's a course and it's a paid, for people who want to take the census, you have to take a class, but it's a paid thing, time for you to get paid to do this, to take the census. We had a roundtable then and I actually brought up the subject of biodigesters, the feasibility of it to be a regional problem and a study needs to be done and what we can do about it as a city, but also as a regional, the southern New Hampshire regional area could do something about it because it, we're running out of space, basically, in our places. And currently, we do have a food waste, I'm not a food waste, but a water waste facility at the water treatment plant. I talked with Bishar down there, David, and it was quite interesting to talk with him.
Okay.
Something that's coming up.
All right. Mike?
May I ask two questions?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Ed, when you say census taker, you mean like a census worker who goes around and asks questions?
Yes.
Okay. Not like take the census and answer the questions, but be the question.
They need people to go out physically and do it.
Okay. And then the biodigester, is that for sewage systems as well as landfills?
The, currently, the one at the water treatment plant is working very nicely. It is taking the water and trans, make, transferring it into a methane and they mix it with regular natural gas and that produces heat and causes it to, for electricity, transferring it to electricity. The waste solids, they actually have a company that takes all the waste solids and takes it and buys it and then makes it into a fertilizer. So, it's a win-win for the city.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All set? All right. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move into reading the procedure of the meeting and hearings. So, as we move through here, after legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan or subdivision is read by myself, the board will first determine whether or not the application is complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction. If so ready, then the public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or their representative will be given time to present an overview of the project. They'll speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations and the board will have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, I'll ask for anybody wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan to speak. If you so choose, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And this will be the time for you to express your concerns or ask your questions that you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony to come from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any concerns raised by the public testimony. If we do need to have, or if the public wishes to come forward for one last time, I'm going to ask that you get together and you have one representative that come forward and be allowed to respond to those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After that period has been completed, the public hearing will end and the board will resume the public meeting. At that time, we'll deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject in hand, not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the national revised ordinances for conditional special use permits, site plans and subdivision plans. I thank everybody at this point for their interest and courteous attention. And if you do have a cell phone, if you could put it on vibrate or turn it off, we'd appreciate that as well. Okay. So, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, there are none. I would just take note that case number one, which has previously been on our agenda, has been withdrawn by the applicant. New business conditional special use permits, case, there are no cases. New business subdivision plans, case number two. This is with GMAC Properties LLC owner. Application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision. This property is located at 41 Caldwell Road. I'd ask at this time of the board, has anyone had a chance to take a look at the full application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for jurisdiction?
So moved.
So we have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction. Do I have a second on it?
A second.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None? Motion passes. Okay. Do we have someone for the applicant here that wants to present the project?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Geida and I'm a wetland scientist and soil scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants and I'll be representing the proposed subdivision plan tonight for GMAC Properties.
Could you just give the address of your office, please?
Yes. 206 Elm Street, Milford, New Hampshire.
Thanks. I'm going to have to take this off. Yeah, you can pull the microphone out if you want.
So we reviewed and the staff reviewed the proposal. There were no outstanding staff comments for the subdivision. This is the plan here at 41 Caldwell Road. The light blue is the existing boundary of the property. The bright orange here is the proposed lot line. All the existing homes are outlined here in red. The street is in purple. The existing home, obviously, all these homes here are serviced by municipal sewer and water. This yellow area here is a proposed utility easement to allow the continued use of sewer and water to the existing home here. The proposed new lot is to the southwest here and meets all the town's criteria for the subdivision in the zone. We are requesting three waivers. One is to the overhead power, or I mean, the underground power requirement, where we would like to do an overhead power. The other one is basically the, the location for all the properties within, I think it's a, I don't know what the distance is here.
Thousand.
Thousand feet. Yeah. And the third one, I apologize.
Sidewalks?
Sidewalks, of course. Yes. As the staff commented there, this, this area doesn't have any sidewalks and in this situation, wouldn't really be beneficial to have a, one section of sidewalk in front of the existing home. So, we would like to request a waiver to that sidewalk requirement and there will be a financial donation to the, to the city to offset that.
Can, yeah, can you be specific about the donation amount?
I believe it was $5,900.
That's what's written in the staff report?
Yeah.
That's accurate. Can you explain the, the overhead utility waiver or the underground utility waiver? The reasoning behind your request?
I think it's just to maintain the continuity with, with the neighborhood.
So the adjacent are overhead?
Yes.
Any questions from the board of the applicant? Mr. Weber?
What is the proposed utility easement for?
That's for the existing home, has sewer and water running right through to the, from the street to the house. So, that basically is going over a portion of the proposed new lot. So it's an easement to allow that to travel over the proposed new lot.
Okay. Also, could you explain the, the reasoning for the LCBs that are placed on there and...
Right, so as far as the...
For them?
Yep, for the stormwater management to basically, I believe they were, I don't know the requirements exactly off the top of my head. Our engineers designed those to take all the, any impervious area, so allow that area that's for the new home to infiltrate into the ground and not have any off-site stormwater discharge. So that will allow it to infiltrate into the soil directly through the catch basins.
What type of soil is it?
It's a Windsor, Windsor loamy sand. It's an excessively drained soils. It's sanding, basically sands and gravels.
So it does already, the water doesn't set there and flush off to the, it's not clay, hard clay?
That's correct. Yep. It is, it's relatively flat.
Yeah.
It's, because we're increasing impervious area, so the, where the, where the home is, obviously, that, that area is not going to infiltrate water, so the gutters and all that area is going to, has to get, rather than just dumping it on the ground, it'll get channeled into that, those infiltration basins.
So you're saying that the downspouts from the roof itself?
Roof, yep.
Will go into that?
Correct.
Okay. Now, will that be, how will that be inspected? Will your engineer be inspecting the compliance of that to his engineered drawings?
Typically, I'm not sure if they actually do the certification on that inspections. It may be the building code enforcement. We can certainly look at that and make sure somebody takes a look at it and certifies it.
What I, what I usually ask for is that your engineer that, or an engineer, a certified engineer, licensed engineer, that he does a construction affidavit for any engineered, you know, things that are typically on it because, so that they will, the homeowners around them will be protected.
Right.
And the homeowner itself can be protected.
Sure.
They don't have to come back and pay for something that should have been done.
Right. We have no issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Varley?
I was wondering if you could just explain, there's the, the shape of the lot, you know, there's the, the section where there's the utility easement. Can you maybe just explain why the lot, what the function of that section down there? Is that just to meet the minimum width requirements or is there some other function to that?
Right. That's, that's to meet the minimum width requirements, well, it's twofold and obviously to, because of that, we have to allow the easement to, for the underground utilities to service the existing home. Yep.
Okay, but there's otherwise nothing, there's no, there's no structure or anything in that space you're intending?
Nope. Nope. It's just the existing lawn in front of that home right now.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. And just for clarification, it looks like the lots adjacent to the lot that's going to be subdivided. One of them is 47A and B, correct?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
I, I'm just trying to figure out the numbering. There won't be any, any trouble with numbering on the street after this? Is enough?
Oh, right. Yeah. I'm, I'm sure that there is if, I, I know it went through a lot of review with the engineering and I think the fire department reviewed it. I'm not sure if it, what the exact number is going to be with that, but...
There is one. There is one. Fire department. You know, from the fire department in here.
Okay.
So that, that's not going to be an issue?
It's 41...
4143.
Yeah.
Okay.
4143.
Yep, thank you.
I need to ask one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
On the, on the new lot, I mean, not a whole lot of detail, but is there, are you going to do a driveway on that lot for the home?
Yes. I have another plan. I don't know if it's shown on that one. I think it might be in your packet.
It's on the second plan.
Okay.
The grading and utility plan. Goes right to the garage, right there. It shows on yours.
Okay, I see it now. I see it, thank you.
Yeah, I think so. Other questions, Mr. Pucci? You want to?
Yeah, nice, thank you.
You're okay, great.
So, if, if you don't, if you don't take that easement into account, then there are 57 feet of frontage. The area where the easement is going, I mean. If you don't put that jog in there.
Oh, right.
Then you have, what are you, three feet shy of the frontage?
I, I believe so, yes.
Is there a lot width problem as well or is it just the frontage?
Nope, it has the frontage and the lot width as defined. It meets that requirement. It's, I have it right here. The horizontal distance between the side lot lines is measured at the minimum front yard depth, which is the front yard setback of 10 feet, as required in this article, parallel to the street line. So, at the setback here, the 10 feet, at that distance is the measurement of the width of the lot.
Okay. So, why does the easement have to go all the way? Why is the easement going that far over? Is that, you're probably answering me and I'm not understanding it quite enough.
Well, one of the reasons is to keep it, keep it uniform and to allow for that, that frontage, the required frontage on that lot.
You're only three feet shy of the frontage. If you, if you took that line straight out to the street, you'd be three feet shy? You'd be at 57 feet?
Yes, that's correct.
So, frontage are actually, frontage is 50 minimum required. It's on the plan notes. If you've got a plan note, the frontage required minimum is 50 feet.
Okay.
It's lot width at 60.
It's the lot width, okay. You're three feet shy of the lot width, not the frontage. Thanks. I get it, I get it. So why is, why is that jog so far over? Do you see what I'm asking?
Yes, yeah.
It seems to me like what you're really doing is you're putting a lot in that's got, that's 57 feet wide. And we're putting that jog on there just to conform to probably to have to go for a variance on your lot.
Correct.
Okay. So, why is that jog so big? Why isn't it just three feet?
I honestly cannot answer that question. I, there must be some reason why, why they went the full length there. I know the sewer line comes kind of right through the middle of it.
I think it's as with lot area. Minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet. Without that jog...
Okay, so without that, they'd need a variance for lot area as well.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So what does this put you over, just like, just over six?
6,025.
Yeah, okay, that answers that.
Okay. Thank you, I apologize.
Okay. Other questions? Mr. DeCrane?
Yes, related to that, I'm looking at the plan notes and I, my staff has to help me here. I thought minimum lot width would be the...
They have it reversed.
Sorry?
They have it reversed. Minimum frontage is 60 feet, the width is the 50. They have it reversed. That's why one of the conditions of approval, number four is minor drafting corrections that will have to be corrected before we record the claim.
Oh. Yeah. Okay. All right. But in both cases, for lot width and frontage, minimum, they have 82 feet. I would think the minimum lot width in this case was 57.
The minimum lot width is 50 feet, the minimum.
No, no, no. I mean, what, sorry, I mean, the lot width they're providing.
Correct.
Is 57, which is less than the, according to the note, it says 82.
That's what they're providing, 82 feet.
But that's only at one point. It narrows down.
Right.
So...
Once you go into your front yard setback, which is 10 feet, at that point, it has to be 50 feet wide.
I see, I got it.
But not all the way back, just at that point?
At the front yard setback, which is 10 feet in the RB zone. I believe it's 10. Front yard setback, yes, 10 feet.
So in other words, they're providing 82 feet of width for 10 feet?
Well, if the front yard setback, yes, 82 feet.
Okay, because, because you're looking at what they're providing, it says 82.
Correct.
That's not, you know, it could be 100 at one point. So I don't know if that's, to me, it's kind of a range, 57 to 82.
Well, exactly. That's kind of, it's there to make it conforming.
Yeah.
But in practicality, it's 57 feet wide there. That, that other, that easement area is going to, for all intent and purposes, going to be, appear to be on the house lot.
So, if you look at the plan that you have drawn, the concrete walkway from the existing house falls right on the property line, the proposed property line.
Yes.
So is there a plan to redo that walkway or is that part of the easement?
It's part of the utility easement. I do not know the details of redoing that walkway, but it's, would be fairly easy to, if that were a condition or requirement, then that could certainly be done.
It says it's a utility and maintenance easement, so I don't know if the maintenance is the, is supposed to cover the walkway.
I see a lot of problems between neighbors here in the future. Some other questions? I don't know if you could help me answer these questions. So, if you look at the grading for the runoff, the grading on the proposed lot, the new lot, the, the stormwater report talks about pre-existing or existing conditions that the runoff flows away from the existing house. In the proposed condition on the, for the new lot, it said it's maintained. So what you have here is runoff coming off the existing house, you know, from the roof and what have you, flowing towards the new lot, which now you're capturing and putting in leach and catch basins. Is that something that you really want to do? Do you want to have runoff coming, that this new lot is having to manage runoff that's coming from a neighboring lot?
Right. Well, I think the, I think the, because of, because of where the lot line is and they're, they're close together, that the calculations are from that lot line for the new proposed lot. The existing one, I, I believe, basically, I mean, there's, they're close and it's a one lawn area, so the catch basin's basically will infiltrate the stormwater, whether it comes from the other lot or is on the existing lot.
I understand that's the intent, but I'm saying if that's really what you want to do, does the existing house have gutters to take their roof water away so it doesn't become a problem for the, for the new property?
Right. I'm not, I'm not sure off the top of my head whether there's gutters on the existing
Again, more problems you can anticipate between neighbors. So, two leach and catch basins are proposed and obviously, they come with maintenance requirements and you'll have to file a maintenance O and M for the city. I'm wondering why they didn't propose one larger basin, which would probably function better than two separate small basins.
I, I'm not the professional engineer, but I mean, typically, if you have, if you separate your, your infiltration, you're going to get more surface area on two smaller ones than one larger one. And it fits better and the structures themselves are a little bit less expensive than one larger one.
Yeah, I just think what I mean is headache. A lot of these, they go in the yards and then they get filled up, but you know...
Right. Well, I'm, I'm sure there'll be a...
Flippings and what have you.
I'm sure there'll be a maintenance plan and it's, I'm, I'm sure it's required or something similar is required, otherwise it wouldn't, we wouldn't be proposing it.
So, so I think you're saying that you didn't do anything with the stormwater?
I personally did not, no.
So, the report talks about the soils, talks about the Kinsley soils, is that what? Hinckley? No, actually Windsor, urban...
Yeah, Windsor.
Which you, you pick from a chart.
Right.
Based on what you expect.
Right, this soil map, there's a soil map that shows that, but I also did inspect the site myself for wetlands and the soils and verify that that is a Windsor soil.
So you took a soil test?
Yep, just a hand auger. You can tell it's, Windsor is a, is a little bit sandier than a Hinckley. Hinckley's more sand and more gravelly and Windsor is more like a beach sand, uniform particles.
Yeah, because I know, I know the lot is cleared, so there are no trees and that kind of thing.
Right.
And so you have to wonder, is that the virgin soil there?
Yeah.
Or was it filled in, you know, this is an urban area.
Yeah.
A lot of areas in the urban part of the city.
There is a little, there's always a little bit of human manipulation, whether it's tilling up a garden or, you know, filling a low area. Given those types of soils, usually drainage is not an issue and you usually don't have those types of fill situations. So what I saw, what I saw was, for all intents and purposes, native, you know, the first ten or twelve inches or so do get. Tilled or planted with grass or things like that, you see some disturbance, but the parent material below is original.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm familiar with the area, familiar enough with the area. I know it's tributary to the Brooklyn, nearby Hasselbrook, which, which has, you know, we have complaints here in the city about. Flooding issues.
Sure.
So I become concerned of whether, what you're doing there.
Yeah.
Is, is the right thing, it will mitigate any, any runoff.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant from the board? Okay. Thanks. At this time I'd ask if there's anybody in the audience who is wishing to speak in opposition or has concern with the plan. Go ahead and come on forward and, you know, make sure you state your name and address at the microphone as well, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, my name is Maura Parnan. I am a Nashville resident, do you want my home address?
Yeah, just your, yeah, home address.
Home address is sixty-six Timberline Drive. Our, we own the property that's in a butter to this property. We own forty-seven A and B Caldwell, which is the immediate adjacent property to forty-one.
Yeah.
Which will then become forty-one and forty-three. So that we're certainly interested people, we just, we have to apologize, we're not really prepared to speak because we've just heard about this Monday. And needed to, we, we didn't get notice of it until that time because of the holiday period.
Okay.
So that, and that also means that some other people are not here that might have been here because of the fact that they're not home. So may I also mention that I believe that Mr. Constant sent an email.
Yeah, we did receive.
And he'd like to make sure that's right into the board minutes?
Uh, I think it was submitted, do you have that?
Yeah, it's right here.
We, we do have it read in, we have it submitted, yeah.
Okay, so that's orally presented to the board?
It's actually written into our.
Written into the minutes?
Yep, yeah, it's a, it's been submitted into.
We want to make sure that he's, he does have some serious concerns and objections. Because he lives immediately across the street from what is forty-one. And the Constant family also developed the entire area at one time. They own many of the properties on Forge, they own some other properties on Caldwell. So they are certainly interested parties and would have been here if they could have been.
Okay.
So, so that, that being said, he does have concerns, I think perhaps some of your concerns have been asked, or his, their concerns have been asked. But I'd like to go on to my specific concern.
Sure.
My specific concern, and my husband's back there. Is that. We really are concerned about how close the property, this property will be to our property line. It's only seven feet away from our property line. It's only a six thousand square foot lot. It really is a rectangle that's only a five hundred and seventy square foot lot if it weren't for that jog. Making it the six hundred, which makes it. Legal.
Okay.
You mean thousand, right? You mean six thousand?
It's, excuse me, six thousand, six, I'm sorry.
No, no worries, I just wanted to.
I'm nervous. Okay, so at any rate, we really feel that we have a concern regarding water. And the drainage of the water, because this has previously been a large nine thousand, approximately nine thousand square foot lot. This, at one time, the whole area was, I believe, a swamp at one time. Water from, had, Sama Book and Hasselbrook drained into that area. There was at one time, I believe, according to legend and people that lived in the area, a small pond. It's pretty low, it does drain. That property is two to four feet higher than my property. And anything that flows onto that property and being so close is going to flow toward me. Okay, or our property. So I. And I did look at the, the topographical map in the process. And we do have a sump pump in our basement as it is now. On the B side, which is the side that's adjacent to five, to this property. So we're very concerned, we do object to the waiver, I believe this is where the waiver. For the. For, if I can refer to my notes. They've requested a waiver for consideration of physical features on site and within a thousand feet of the subdivision boundaries. But my house is in with a thousand feet of those boundaries. And I don't want it, water from their roof making inroads onto my property.
Okay, yeah, that, that waiver is to, is not, it's, it's so that they don't have to draw that area.
I was afraid it wouldn't apply.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, um, it's a, correct me if I'm wrong Steve, but that's for drawing the, drawing the, the land.
Well, at any rate, we are very concerned about the fact that the roof and the roof.
Sure.
The house is going to take up approximately one-third of the total size of the lot. And, and it's right at the side of the lot, we'll only have ten, seven feet. And then maybe about ten feet before all the water comes into our property. And we already have a water problem. So that I would be very concerned about making sure that there are, there's adequate draining. Away from our property on the southwest side, and I don't see any. I see catch basins on the northeast side, I don't see, and on the back. But you can really see, I don't know if, I brought a little map and I colored it in. Showing where the drainage goes and how it goes to the southwest.
Okay.
Okay, and it really, it really does. There's a, there's a two-foot difference. Well, it's, it actually starts at, oh. A hundred and sixty-six feet above sea level, then it goes to a hundred and sixty-four. The hundred and sixty-four puts, line goes right through that property. And then our property is lower than that.
Okay, you, you can pass that around if you want to.
Sure, I'd love to.
Yeah.
We made extra copies.
Sure. You can just get to Steve.
I have a legend. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know if you can. I didn't have appropriate colors, so I did whatever I could. If you take a look at the legend, the lowest point in, in the immediate neighborhood would be blue, actually, there may be a lower point too. The blue, Caldwell runs. Northeast to southwest. You could see a little bit of the word Caldwell, it's under the green. Okay, and if you go up Caldwell, we're number forty-seven. The property we're talking about is forty-one. Okay, forty-seven is yellow. Yellow is between a hundred and sixty-two to a hundred and sixty-four feet above sea level. And when you get up to forty-one, that's partly a hundred and sixty-two to a hundred and sixty-four and partly a hundred and sixty-four to a hundred and sixty-six. So it gets progressively higher in elevation. As you go up the street toward the northeast. So we, we are concerned about the water flow.
Okay.
And where it's going to be going toward our house. We've had a problem previously, so we're kind of informed. Consumers as far as that goes.
Okay.
We have, we have a sump pump in our own house for the same reason. And we don't want, we don't want pressure on the walls from additional water being forced right at the edge of the property.
Okay.
So that, that's our real concern. We, we don't like anything being that close to our property, we feel that it's, it does alter the, the overall feeling of the residential neighborhood. The other side of the street is all single-family homes, it's zoned for single-family. So that's one of the objections that many of the people on the other side of the house, of the street will have. Another property being slipped in. Where there, where there hasn't been one before, so.
Okay. Uh, any questions of the board for the butter?
Yes.
Ed?
Just to state, I asked the question of what the roof downspouts would be, where they would be going, because. My concern is that it would go onto your property.
Mm-hmm.
And he stated that they will go into the catch basins, they will not go onto the ground and then fill into your property.
Do you know where one of those catch basins is though?
Right, but all of, I said, that they have to maintain that all of the downspouts go into and not go just dropped onto the property.
But then they disperse into the earth, don't they?
Underground.
Underground and, how deep are those catch basins?
We can let that applicant respond to that.
Because they've got to go some, the water's got to go someplace from there.
Right.
And it's going to go south and west, it just has to, you know. We, we don't get surface water cracking our wall on Timberline Drive either. We get subterranean wall, water cracking our wall. So that, there's, the force of underground water is severe. So we're, we're being, we're being proactive about making sure that if they're putting something in right at the edge of the property, that there's really sufficient. Protection for the edge of butters. And, you know, we're not the only abutter, but we're the immediate abutter.
Sure.
You're one of the abutters?
Yeah.
Other questions for the butter? Steve?
I just wanted to point out ma'am, a slight error in your, your plan.
I'm sorry?
A slight error in the, your colored plan, let me just, if you have it in front of you, can I point out an error?
Sure.
The, the orange colored area.
Mm-hmm.
The north side, it's still one sixty-four, not one sixty-six.
The orange, it's still, well, it's one sixty-four to one sixty-six. I didn't say it was one sixty-six. The, I've labeled.
It's the same line, the contour line is the same line.
May I come up?
Yeah, I can show it to you. So you see this line here is one sixty-four and as it goes around.
Yeah.
It continues to be one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made a mistake there.
As well as over here. So it's still one sixty-four.
No, actually, that's one sixty-six, that was.
The pink is one sixty-six.
This area is one sixty-six.
So this line is one sixty-four and this is one sixty-four.
Can't be one sixty-four, that's one sixty-four.
It's the same line, it goes all around like this, it was the contour.
No, this, this is, this is a higher elevation, if you look at the whole area, it's a higher elevation, that's not, at least. I came into the planning board and that's in the count.
Yeah, I compared it with a survey that the applicant provided. And it agrees very closely, there's a difference of ninety feet between their datum and your datum.
That, that wasn't my notation, that was from the planning board when I came in this morning.
I see, okay.
So, so I just, I, I colored it in.
Alright. Just so that people are not misled.
Thank you for pointing it out.
Yeah, okay, I get what you're saying.
But at any rate, you can see that.
Yeah, sure.
It, it does flow, the point was, I really want to make sure that everybody understood that the water flows in that direction.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm going to, I was really concerned about this roof. And is there any protection from the water flowing?
We understand, thank you.
Any other questions for the butter? From the board, no? Okay, thanks, I appreciate your time. Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Please go ahead and come forward and state your name and address and any concerns you might have.
I'm Jessica Crosby, I'm in a butter, I live at forty-six Caldwell Road, which is not directly across the street, but somewhat diagonally across the street. So my concern is, as a part of the side of the street where there are fewer duplexes, just the appearance of having that. I bought the house in what I thought was a very established neighborhood of houses that were built quite a long time ago. So I thought the appearance of the neighborhood and the spaces of the houses would essentially remain unchanged. I do have the concern, in addition to that, over, and maybe it's just I don't understand well enough, the proposed utility easement. Which seems to be a way to get around the compliance so that you'd have to, so you can avoid a variance. Just doesn't seem like that's appropriate, or being done in the right manner perhaps.
Okay.
And I think those are my concerns.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Butter from the board? Mr. Peterson?
Could you please explain further your concern about the utility easement? I didn't quite understand what the risk is.
Sure, it sounded to me from what I heard described that had they, if they did not have that lot built that way. Or proposed that way with that utility space easement, that it would then not meet requirements for lot size perhaps. And would require a variance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? At this point I'd ask the applicant to come forward and maybe try to address. So there was a couple of things brought up, one was proximity, so maybe you can talk about setbacks a little bit there. Obviously the drainage, maybe if you could be a little more clear on how the drainage works particularly on that south side. And then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the home may be close to your home. But it will meet all those towns, the city's requirements, those are the setbacks in the area. There's a lot of other homes that are similar distances apart. We designed to what the zoning requirements are. It's kind of what we have to do. If there were more room and there were smaller houses, they would be different. This is the requirement for that zone and we meet those requirements on the setback distances. As far as the drainage goes, as I mentioned a little bit earlier. Everybody's concerned about that as well, which is why the stormwater management plan was required. A professional engineer designed it. The city has reviewed it, their engineering department, and I'm assuming have no issues with it based on the staff review. It's been designed to capture that water on that lot and infiltrate it into the ground. You mentioned that you had an issue with groundwater. We're not creating any new water, it's just the same water that's falling from the sky. It falls on the ground right now, it's, will fall on the roof when the new home is there and get channeled into the ground as well. So the whole point of a stormwater management plan is to not discharge more water off of the lot. Than is currently being discharged off of the lot, so that's the task that the engineering takes care of and that the city has reviewed and. I believe doesn't have any issue with. So you're not going to get any additional water running towards your house, the whole plan is that water stays on site. And gets infiltrated just like it does now. It will actually probably infiltrate more now with the leach and catch basins where right now you have just a lawn area. Where there's a higher probability that that would run off, especially this time of year when you have frost. You can get rain events and it doesn't sink into the ground because the soils are frozen. With the catch basins, you have, the earth is warmer, those areas don't freeze below the ground level, so it will still infiltrate. Stormwater into the ground even in the winter time. I'm not sure if there were any other issues that were brought up.
Ed?
Yes. The. Concern was that the downspout on the back side or the one closest to one oh five sixty-seven. Would, any downspout from that side of the house. Needs to actually go and be propagated to that stormwater infiltration settling area that's in the back.
Right.
So it doesn't show how that would be done, I'm just saying. You do have your catch basins, but that's on the front of the house or to the. The northeast side of the house where the walk is. But yet the back of the house, there doesn't really show any. Means for that water to go to the infiltration area, just, you know, and that's her concern.
Sure.
Okay, and we really, the, I know the, I was at that lot and I did see. That the way that the contours of that land. They go, they would go directly to her property and so I think that's. And so I think that's a real concern for your, how you're going to be doing that, and that assurance is that it will go to the infiltration system away from her foundation. Okay?
Sure. I don't, I don't think there's any problem with doing that, and we can certainly make that assurance and that as far as a condition, that all of that stormwater gets directly channeled to those basins.
Okay, thank you.
Maggie?
Could you just please clarify, though, according to this plan, there are not any actual downspouts or gutters, though, on this proposed plan that would possibly direct any water?
Well, there's a note here with a roof drain that goes to the catch basin here in the, in the right-hand corner, the lower right-hand corner, southeast corner of the garage.
So that would include a gutter system?
Right.
Is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
But the, I'm sorry.
Ed, do you have another comment?
Yes. You need one for the.
The other side of the house.
Southwest side. So it does show that there is something going to go down to that stormwater infiltration, and that would make it go away from her property.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So those, that can be part of your stipulation of minor.
Plan revisions.
Plans, you know, just minor.
Sure.
Plans.
Yep.
That would be included in that.
Absolutely.
And it would behoove you, that if you could, when you get the new plans, that you would take it to your neighbor and show, so that they lose concern.
Sure.
Don't have the concern anymore.
Yep.
Other questions for the applicant?
One.
Mr. Duken?
Fall up to what Mr. Weber was talking about. So we don't know if the stormwater calculations to size those catch basins were done with taking all of the roof water from the new building. We don't know that. So I will ask that they run their calculations, seeing that now you're going to possibly now direct that side of the roof, the catch basins.
Yeah, we can certainly address that and make sure that we'll accommodate it, or that it needs to. Yep.
Can you, can you address, you know, a couple of folks have brought up the butters on this, this sort of jog in the, in the property line. Are there any other solutions to, have you, did you review any other solutions or opportunities that would have resulted in a compliant site that does not have that jog?
I am not certain of the concepts that were proposed prior to this. I, as, I believe that this one meets all the requirements. I'm not sure, obviously, we're restricted somewhat with the existing home.
Yeah. So essentially, the existing home location is driving that jog?
Yes, I would envision that if the existing home were removed and a new home constructed, that you could have a straight line, but that would obviously be a hardship.
Sure, I get it. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Steve?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have to prolong this. So the utility easement is the entire jog?
Yes.
And so we don't have a copy of that here, and there might be notes in here. Would that prohibit the owner of the new property from planting trees and so on? That would impact the existing house?
Well, yes, in the sense that you wouldn't want to plant a tree right over the top of your sewer line or your water lines for root, you know, fear of root damage. So no more so than the existing home right now. Wouldn't want to do that either, so.
What, put in fences?
I don't think fences would be an issue. It's basically to allow maintenance there, so if the sewer line gets plugged and it has to get repaired, something like that, that if you did put a fence there, it would have to get removed or be removable, so that if repairs had to be done, they could be.
So I'm just wondering about the impacts to the aesthetics of the existing house.
Right. I mean, I mean, right now, it's lawn. I wouldn't anticipate that anybody would, would change it for any particular reason.
If I owned it, I'll do whatever I am allowed to.
Right. Well, I would say with the easement, with the part of that easement, I don't have the verbiage either, but I'm sure that that would restrict planting trees there, because that would be, would inhibit maintenance of that line, so. Small shrubs, things like that, I don't think would be an issue.
Chairman LeClair was asking about other options. I would think, maybe in order to try to achieve the area 6,000 square feet, maybe do the jog in the front, a smaller jog in the front, a smaller jog in the back, and still get, and try to meet the minimum frontage, which is 60 feet, and split the difference, you know?
Yeah.
Certainly pushing this thing to the.
Perhaps. I mean, we also try to keep things somewhat uniform. You know, keep the lines a little bit cleaner. I mean, if you're jogging front and jogging rear, I think you're introducing additional questions for people wondering where their property lines are down the road. And it just, it kind of creates, you know, another issue with if you had another jog in the back, I think the same questions would arise of, you know, why?
We've seen some really strange shapes here.
Yeah. I've seen some myself, so. Where, where, I understand your questions, and the designs basically were designed to meet the requirements. I know there's probably other options and other configurations that, that, that could be done. I don't know if, if that outweighs, I mean, I guess my thought is if it's compliant, changing it isn't necessarily going to make it better, if there's other compliance.
Anybody else, questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. So at this time, I know there was two folks that came up and had concerns. If you still have a question or concern, you could get together and I'd allow one of you to come up and speak for both of you. And ask any final questions if you want to. That's, that's fine. Just let me know.
It really should be associated to what was just testified.
Yeah, it would be in relation to what the applicant has recently rebutted. And make sure, again, you just state your name and address, just so the, it gets on the recording.
Maura Barnan, 66 Timberline Drive, and we own the property at 47 AMB Caldwell. And we're, as I stated, the real concern is the amount of water that's going to be directed toward our property. If one of the solutions might be gutters, and a direct line that goes back to that well, or whatever it is in the back corner of the property, but there seems to be no connection at the moment. And it doesn't seem like half of the roof water is going to be going in that direction, at least. So that, and it's awfully close to the property line, so that's, that's a real concern. And we wish, we truly wish it weren't that close to the property line because of that, you know. All of the other houses have wider spaces on the street, and the street behind them much wider, so that, you know, this, this really is a congested development. So that we hope everything is done to not create an impact on our house. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the butter from the board? No? Okay, all right, thanks. Any questions for staff while I have the hearing open? Mr. Rupucci?
I just have one question for staff. This lady had mentioned that she just got the notification Monday, and I realize she's an absentee, from, she's an absentee owner. She doesn't live at that house. So I just want to affirm on the record that the notifications were done in the right timeframe.
Correct. The a butter notices were mailed out on December 27th, and it was sent to her home on Timberline.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before I close the hearing?
I guess just a.
Alden Tenza.
Just a clarification for the record, what the minimum setback is. It's six feet, correct?
It is 10 from the front property line, 7 from the side, and 20 from the rear, in the RP zone.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the hearing and move to the public meeting. So we have in front of us, obviously, a two-lot subdivision. The biggest discussion points I see have been drainage. There's been some engineering solutions talked about for that, that, you know, that has, we've seen that before, obviously. Then there's the issue, or I should say the discussion point regarding sort of the configuration of the lot, and how it's, how it's kind of adjusted somewhat abnormally, I guess, to comply with what is in effect probably really the square footage, more than anything, is the big thing. So that's my two cents. I'm happy to listen to what folks have. Mr. Rupucci?
Yeah, I. I'm going to argue against myself here a little bit, but.
Who are you?
That other person there.
For all intent and purposes, this, this easement is, is on paper. Aesthetically, these two lots are going to look like they're divided straight down the line. And based on that, if you, if you take out that easement, there, that's 140 feet, and it's, it's less, it's between 2% and 3%, it'll end up being 2% to 3% shy of the required 6,000 feet. If you take out that, that jog.
Right.
Right? So it's an incredibly small incursion. It would be, it's very incredibly minor, and I can't really foresee not receiving relief for that if they were forced to go to the zoning board for that. It's such a small.
Right.
Distance, right? Setback is the same thing. It's very small. It's from, it's three feet shy, I think, of what it needs to be.
Yeah, basically.
On the setback. So.
Or width.
That's one width.
Yeah.
The width.
Yes, not setback.
But on the other hand, we don't, when, when, when applicants come forward with lot sizes, we're not in the, the city is not in the business of deciding that they're close enough, so we're not going to require them to get relief. So if it came forward with that, 1% or 2% shy of the 6,000, they would need to go to the zoning board.
Right.
And I'm not questioning whether or not the zoning board would, would grant the relief, but that is the place for concerned neighbors to get those concerned addressed, those concerns addressed, more than it is, in my view, here. So on one hand, I would like to say, I don't like that jog. I don't think, I don't think it serves any purpose except to cram this lot into conforming, so they don't have to get zoning relief. And the purpose, and I think actually getting the zoning relief, I think it would be almost a foregone conclusion. It would force these applicants to pay a little money for application, and I can't imagine they wouldn't get the relief. However, it would give the neighbors an opportunity to address their concerns with those things. So I'm, I'm interested in what everybody else thinks. I'm kind of going to go along with, with the, with the flow of the board. I, you know, the things about, the, there's multifamilies all over the place, right? There's duplexes there. So the character of the neighborhood, I don't think is really affected by this. Whereas it's so close and it's, it's practically conforming. I, I'm not, there's no weight on, in my mind, on, on those arguments. The drainage, I leave it to the engineering people to just, it's a problem that needs to be solved, and they're required to solve it. I don't think we would stop the project. We would just require them to solve the problem. So from my point of view, I think it might be more fair to the neighborhood to, to not allow that easement and to require them to get relief from the zoning board on, on those two minor things, so that the neighbors have a chance to address them, but I'm, I'm going to go with the flow here.
Other comments?
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Riley? So I, I agree with you absolutely on the, the character of the neighborhood thing. I mean, and I would just note, there seems to be a lot of buildings here that are pretty close to the lot lines. And, you know, as you said, there's a bunch of other duplexes, so I wouldn't be that concerned about that issue. The drainage, again, as you said, it seems like there's an opportunity to, you know, provide for an appropriate stipulation, that they have to, you know, make the adjustments necessary that, that Steve and Ed, Maggie were suggesting in terms of the flow of the drainage. I guess, I'm a little bit torn on the, on the jog and the easement that's required because of that. I'm not, not so much worried about the utility easement, but I do think Steve made a good point about the sidewalk, or the, sorry, the walkway being the middle easement too, which could make things a little bit more complicated, although the applicant seemed willing to move the walkway if that was a necessity. I guess, the one thing I just wanted, wanted to sort of ask you about, Jerry, in terms of what you were talking about with, you know, the zoning relief and, and maybe that's the more appropriate form. I guess, you know, given what you said about, you would expect zoning relief to be granted, and the fact that the neighbors have had the opportunity to come here tonight, even if this is prob, you know, maybe not the right place necessarily to dress up those sort of issues. I mean, is there something in particular that you think that, a different opportunity that would be given, given to the zoning board for them to address these issues that you don't think they would have had an opportunity to do here tonight?
You mean the neighbors?
Right.
No, I, I don't. I think the burden on the applicant would be higher. I think, I think that the applicant would, would have to demonstrate why they're, why they have a hardship and require variances. And that's a higher burden on them. As far as the neighbors go, I don't agree with what you're saying. I mean, people. I don't know. This, it doesn't sound like it makes sense probably as I say it, but I don't think our board is going to put too much consideration into zoning issues. You know what I mean? It's like, I don't think we're going to sit here and really spend a lot of time hacking that out, where that's what that board is there for.
Right.
So, no, I don't think the outcome would be different. I think the outcome would end up being what it is. I just, I'm not sure that the process would have been respected as well if we don't just call this what it is. It's really close to being, being okay. But granting that easement doesn't make this any more conforming, in my mind. I look at it and go, it's really not any more conforming. It's still not really conforming. We're giving, we're letting them put 140 feet of land onto the next-door neighbor's lot that no one is ever going to perceive that has even been done. neighbor's lot that no one is ever going to perceive that has even been done. It's just a semantical thing.
Right.
So, the, you, you make an excellent reason why I said, I'll go along with whatever you say, 'cause it makes sense what you're saying, but I, I think we're kind of sh, we're just circumventing the process a little bit by doing it this way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sorry, Ed.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I don't disagree with you. I mean, I, it seems like the, you know, the sort of more natural approach, maybe, is the way to describe it, or, you know, the way you would prefer it, it would be a lot easier for us if they'd simply gone to the zoning board, gotten relief, and then, you know, we'd say, well, we don't have to think about it, right? You know, my only concern would be if, if we're looking at, you know, what decision we have to make with respect to this plan, and, you know, is, is there a basis, and I'm not suggesting that there is or isn't necessarily, I'd, I'd have to think more about it, but is there a basis on which we could say, we can approve this plan because we really think you should go get zoning relief? If the, the lot is conforming as it's placed here, you know, even if it's a, an odd-shaped lot, so I guess I would just, I would just put that out there. Is that, you know, is that a basis upon which we could say, no, we, we really think you ha, do get zoning relief?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be specific, you gotta look at the sort of ten conditions that are on this green card in front of you, you know? And, um, you know, this is a subdivision plan, it's not a site plan, it's not a conditional use permit, so you gotta look closely at those to, uh, there is, there unfortunately isn't one that says, you know, uh, we really think it needs to go to zoning first. Not that we don't think that, but it's a... Ed?
Yes. I might be throwing a monkey wrench into this thing, but I think there's gonna be a problem down the road for the existing homeowner when he, if he ever tries to sell him, uh, either him or her could, needs to sell their property because there's an easement right down, almost like the middle of their property. Two, there's, if they ever put a fence, now are they gonna have to go around that fence and maintain the other side of the fence? And if they don't, and the original homeowner maintains that area of the easement, now they become, that might become their property after seven years or ten years because they're maintaining that part of the property. So, I think there can be a real problem down the road because he will, may have a real hard time, and impacting the original homeowner, this impacts his ability to get far, fair mar, market value for that because of the easement.
I don't know that, Ed, that there's, you're talking about things that we talk about during site plans.
Right.
This is a subdivision.
Right. And, but it is an impact on that original person.
Yeah, that, that, um, you know, surrounding-
That gives credence to go back to-
If, if you look at, if you look at your site plan approval criteria, that, that doesn't have the impact on surrounding.
Yeah. Doesn't have anything there.
It's not in the subdivision-
Yeah.
-criteria that I see, unless I'm missing something. Mr. Rupucci?
Well, separate from, from that, uh, what I'm saying, I, if I was going to make the argument to s, to support putting this to the zoning board, I would do it based on item one. That the subdivision plan is consistent with the goals, objectives, and strategies that, that the, the zoning laws lay out as the intent of the city.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think the zoning laws intend for property owners to make jagged cuts in their property lines to make a mathematical, mathematically conforming lot. I think the intention is that the aesthetics of the lots are, are consistent. And that, that's the place. I mean, it's, it's minor, and it's, it can be considered very picky, but if I was gonna do it, that's the approach I would take.
Makes sense, all right, okay.
And that's-
Ms. Harper?
Yeah? Um, is there a maximum, um, size of an easement? I mean, could someone potentially have a easement that's longer in order to make a lot more consistent?
I'm not aware of, of any, um, but I, I just would like to say that-
You know, I'm saying in theory.
Yeah. The, the easement, one of the conditions of approval, I think it's number seven, is that it will be, um, uh, sent in to us, it'll be reviewed by legal, and it will be recorded with plan, so that in the future, if another homeowner, um, does purchase the land, i- it'll show up on the title search, and it will be there. Um, and also, when this project came in and, and it had that utility easement, um, it goes through a technical review, um, in our office, and the deputy zoning manager did review this, 'cause I had questions too about, is this okay, or, you know, should it go to zoning? And, and he felt that it was okay to, to move forward, um, to the planning board. So it was reviewed internally.
Mr. Rupucci?
Just, just to clarify your point a little bit, my concern is not with the easement. The easement is, is strictly to allow access to that sewer line into the other house.
Right.
My concerns have nothing to do with the easement. It's jogging the lot itself that I am raising an issue with, so that-
Yeah.
I don't wanna convolute the two.
Right.
I think they're the same thing.
Yeah, that's right, 'cause the e, I mean, the easement itself doesn't have a size, it's just the, it's just the legal right to pass over the land, but it's, I think what you're talking about is the size of that jog, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason there's an easement there at all is 'cause there's a sewer line there. If the line didn't happen to be there on the other side, then you wouldn't need the easement. You could still do the jog without the easement.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
A question for staff. So when you, uh, were talking with the pre-zoning board review, did they talk about that jog? Did, did that subject come up?
Uh, yeah, we did, we did talk about that, um, 'cause I had questions about it too, and, um, it wasn't felt that it had to go to zoning board first with, with the plan as it was shown.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ducrene?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's certainly that the, this jog, as described in the letter, was sent in. It's, if you look at this neighborhood, it's, his words, grossly irregular. You look at all the adjacent parcels, they're all a simple rectangle. And if Mr. Rupucci is correct that after these things are built, nothing changes, no one will know the difference, and until these neighbors don't get along, and he puts a stockade fence all around that little rectangle, and, yeah, now certainly issues now may not be a subdivision issue, but certainly it's a-
Yeah.
-big concern, and, and it just leads to, is this good planning? That's what we do here. We look at planning for the future. So, yeah, it would've been better for them to go to zoning and get relief from having to do this, if we don't have to deal with this. Um, you might remember, not too long ago, we had neighbors before us with bitter arguments against each other, had to do with, you know, where the line runs and that kind of thing. So, it's, it's a reality.
Yeah.
And right now, it's one owner who owns everything.
Yeah.
He, he's willing to give whatever you want to make it work-
Yeah.
-until that day, and they don't get along.
Yeah.
Um, but, but I wanna talk about stormwater, because what we're doing here, if you look at what's happening here, we are creating a smaller lot in trying to contain a lot of stormwater within that lot. I had wished that one of those legion catch basins, or another legion catch basin, was put on the remaining lot, and capturing their roof water, just like the abutter who spoke today concerned about the new house roof water company property, I would've preferred that existing roof water co, was collected and infiltrated on that bigger property, instead of having to have all of this stormwater now close to this new home. New foundations are built with concrete, and they're great for the first several years, and then they become porous, they get, they crack, and you have some pumps to take care of your business. We know there is a, an issue in the area, there's some pumps running here, so I would've wished that they have, would've thought about that and kind of spread out infiltration within the entire, um, existing lot. But, um, there might still be an opportunity to do that.
Sure. Mr. Peterson?
In looking at the graphic that the abutter living in number forty-seven Caldwell provided, you can see, um, uh, there's a, the contour of the land has like a four-foot change, you know, from the, the end of forty-one Caldwell down through their other properties towards Hassel Brook. So, what that means is, uh, uh, the natural drainage through the soil is gonna go through the abutter's yard, and they already have some pump because, you know, they've had problems with water already. So, um, I, I think what I'm trying to say is, it's important that the catch basins and the drainage that the applicant provides doesn't make that problem worse, and that the water actually goes away from or around, um, the people living at forty-seven Caldwell. So, their solution, we have to be reassured, is gonna work.
Yeah. Anybody else? Alden Tenza?
Okay, so there's a question for staff, because we hear sometimes, especially with businesses, that there's gonna be maintenance and upkeep for these stormwater drainage systems. Um, but in a single-family home, obviously, that, that falls to the, uh, home, the new homeowner, uh, to maintain that system. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. With the new MS four permit that went into effect, um, it's a whole new procedure with stormwater, and actually stipulation number seven deals with, um, stormwater documents that will get recorded, and it outlines who's responsible, um, for the maintenance of these. And one of the thing our office is gonna be doing, actually in the next couple of weeks, is following up and sending out letters to these homeowners that have come before the board to make sure that they are being cleaned out, which we'll probably get a lot of questions about, but, so that we're putting a real emphasis on being proactive and cleaning them out, so hopefully that will help with some of the problems in some of these neighborhoods.
And so if someone can't afford to do it, doesn't do it, what recourse do, do neighbors have, or does the city have?
Well, I think part of the, um, the, the easement that we get recorded, um, gives the city the right to go in and, uh, clean them out. I, I would have to defer to Mr. Ducrene if that's how we're gonna do it going forward, if that will happen, but, but that is in, um, the easement, that the city has the right to go in and then clean them out.
That's one plan.
If I, if I may just follow up with, um, Mr. Ducrene.
Sure.
Um, when, when one of these systems fails, do you know because of, it's just excess water, groundwater, uh, on, on the top of the surface?
That, that may be one telltale sign. Water shouldn't be coming off-site is, is doing that now, it means that something's not working.
Mr. Rupucci?
We're on the topic of this. So they're putting these two stormwater systems on the new lot.
Right.
Right? Do we ever require them? What keeps them from maybe moving those towards even onto the, the, the house lot? If, if the, if the concern is that too much water is gonna be concentrated close to number forty-seven, why can't they just move one of those over far, like, behind the existing house? And have it that much further away from number forty-seven to begin with, right? Can we, we're not just addressing the new lot, we're addressing both lots.
Or some of the existing house.
Yeah.
I would think north of the house, existing house, that water's probably not gonna make it over to forty-seven.
But if, if we say to them, we think that the, the, one of those two drainage systems should be further north, I guess it would be, is that common? Is that something that we do here?
I, I think so. I was suggesting that, and-
Well, I mean, we have in many instances said, you know, if people don't feel like the plan's approvable, we can certainly talk to the applicant and say, you know, we always have that option of tabling, explaining our concerns, and giving them the opportunity to go back and try again, and, and get, you know, if we think that there should be additional stormwater, like, like, it, it, we could do that even because we don't know if the calculations have all of the-
I don't think that-
You know, you could do it that way, too.
That particular issue, I don't think, because of the legion catch basin-
Yeah.
And you're not talking about very large amounts of water.
Sure, it's a house, yeah.
I don't think it gets you to the point to table because of that.
Okay.
I think it's something that we can stipulate, and they can resubmit a plan for staff's review and approval.
Yeah. With additional stormwater measures to deal with the existing house runoff on that property.
Yes.
You know?
That would be reviewed by engineering, wouldn't it?
Right, right, right. So, yeah, we could, you think that's reasonable to be handled in a stipulation manner?
Yes.
So, that would alleviate any concerns of the existing house ending up on this, we'll call it the new lot, you know? I mean, the design essentially, right now, has that in there, right? So... Okay. Any other thoughts? Any other discussion? Anybody wanna make a motion?
Oh, I, I wanted to just add one thing. The, um, prior to certification of occupancy, a construction affidavit, um, of all civil engineered items on the site, um, not covered by a building permit, would be inspected by a licensed engineer. That's kind of typical of what I've been talking about for a while. And could, I am for stipulation, um, uh, where it says, um, minor drafting, I was looking to see if there was anything for, that's engineering, there isn't. I don't see any engineering stuff, just the fire marshal. But the minor, uh, draft corrections be made, uh, approved by staff and the building department, would that take care of the, um, catch basins and stuff like that? Would that?
I think you'd be specific if you wanna, if you wanna see additional stormwater measures on the lot one oh five dash twenty-three or whatever, um, you should say it. Yeah. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let it be covered by one of the existing staff stipulations. I, I think you, my, my recommendation is you add something specific to that.
Good question for staff.
Yep.
Linda? Quick question. Is it, is it required on the subdivision plan to have all the adjacent lots, um, not just lot numbers and addresses, but also owner's names?
Uh, in the site plan it is.
Well, not subdivision?
No, in the subdivision.
Okay.
We have the adjacent on a separate sheet. We have all the abutters on a separate sheet, their names and addresses and all that.
Not a plan?
No, not a plan.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody, uh, does any more, anybody feel like there's any more discussion, or somebody ready to make a motion one way or another with any stipulation?
I'm writing something else out.
I don't, but that's close, yeah. Do you want him, Mr. Riley?
Or, Ed, were you preparing to make a motion?
Uh, as long as you're, you're gonna make, um, any, what we were talking about, certificate of occupancy-
Stormwater management and-
Yeah, stormwater management. Are you putting that in? Then I'll say, you can make it.
Mr. Riley?
Unless someone else has a preference to make a motion.
Nope. It's all yours, Mr. Riley.
All right. Well, in that case, uh, I would make a motion to approve new business number two subdivision plan, finding that it meets the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G, and we're gonna have a total of twelve stipulations. The first three stipulations are all waiver requests. All reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations four through ten, as written in the staff report. Then I'm going to add a new stipulation, number eleven, um, that would indicate that the applicant will perform revised, uh, stormwater calculations to- the applicant will perform revised, uh, stormwater calculations to incorporate, um, both the, the runoff from the existing lot and the new lot. And that furthermore, that the applicant will, um, proposed revised stormwater management, and that the applicant will revise, uh, sorry, provide revised, um, s- s- stormwater management, proposed features for, um, the existing lot one oh five twenty-three. Then I would add an additional stipulation number twelve, indicating that, uh, prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, uh, the applicant would, uh, provide a construction affidavit from a licensed engineer for all, uh, engineered components on the plan. And then finally, I just wanted to, um, indicate, Mr. Apucci was kind enough to remind me that with respect to stipulation number three, um, we'll read that the waiver is granted, will not be contrary, and that the applicant has agreed to make a sidewalk contribution of fifty-nine hundred dollars.
Okay, so we have that motion. I, I would, before a second, ask maybe if you might consider adding or amending to stipulation number eleven, that there be specific provisions to deal with the runoff from the south side of lot, um, one oh five dash one sixty-four. And, and to move that water to any stormwater equipment on the north side of that lot, i.e. gutters.
Yes.
I mean, there's multiple types of systems, but something moving it from the south to the north.
Uh, yes, so I, I'm, I'm happy to adjust the stipulation in that fashion, so it would include the components of the revised calculations, uh, revised proposals for stormwater management specifically on the existing lot one oh five twenty-three. And then, furthers, um, Mr. Claire suggested that it would, um, include revised proposals to ensure that the, um, that the stormwater runoff from the, on the south side is, um, transported to the north side of the property. Is that correct?
Any second. Second by Mr. Apucci. Any further discussion on the, Mr. Apucci?
He was just raising his hand. One question. When Mr. Weber suggested that, um, amend that, uh, stipulation, he referenced, uh, construction things that weren't covered by a permit.
Building permit.
A building permit, but when you made the motion, I don't think that was part of it.
Okay. So we don't have a second yet? We're still in the...
No, I seconded it.
Oh, you did, okay.
And I was discussing, just, I was just discussing it, so...
Yeah, okay.
I'm glad he signed it because I put his name down.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, I meant to, I just wanted to make sure that was exactly what was intended to be.
Sure, yeah, I mean, y- y- what you're saying is perfectly fine. I understand what he's saying, bill, by not building permit and, and they would, if it was done by a building permit, then it would be covered already.
Right, so that, that would need to change that then, right? It would, you, it, the motion would need to say...
Not covered by building permit.
Engineering affidavit, that's for stuff that's not covered by a building permit.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, so you're saying it would not need to cover something that was?
Yeah.
The affidavit doesn't have to cover something that's covered by a building permit.
I think you could just add that language on to what you already said.
Yeah, so, just, well, I'll clarify, um, or amend however we wanna characterize it. My motion with respect to stipulation number twelve, to indicate that the, the construction affidavit that I referred to is only with respect to those components of the plan that were, would not otherwise be covered by a building permit.
So do we have a second on that amended?
Second there.
Second by Mr. Apucci. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None? Motion passes. Thanks.
We take a short break.
Sure. We're gonna take a couple-minute break here.
Good choice of words.
What, do I have it? Oh, in the packet. I haven't looked through that yet.
Steve, they haven't dug up Kinsley Street in about three weeks. Can you do something about that? I'm a little tired. Too smooth.
Yeah. Don't, don't, don't talk too soon. Because we have plans.
I'm sure.
Actually, uh, this month, you're gonna see some work closer to here, Kinsley. Sure work.
Sure work.
We want him to do it in the winter.
It'll be south of me, though, right? Uh, not south, west.
West, yeah. East.
East, right, east.
North and west.
North.
I'm just gonna wait a second for staff to come back here.
Towards town is the way we like to put it.
Inbound.
Is that what it is?
Any word you wanna use? You know, a lot of times I have to say stuff like that, working as a cop, you know? And I can never remember what direction it is. So I, instead of trying to say it the way you're supposed to say it, I'll be like, uh, headed towards Milford, you know? Just put out a location rather than a direction.
And they get it.
Remember it.
Everyone knows what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I think we'll wait for staff for... Oh, we're, we're, again.
Why do you need staff and Jerry's here?
As long as you're here, we, we can go on.
Happy New Year.
All right, so I'm gonna bring us back into order here. Um, so, next up we have case, the case number three, that, uh, case has been postponed to March twenty-first. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance to look at this, um, technical review meeting agenda?
Uh, I did have a chance to review. Um, the technical review meeting minutes, and, uh, I'd make a motion that having reviewed that, uh, document, there are no proposals of regional impact.
If you have a motion that there are no proposals of regional impact, we have a second. Second by Mr. Apucci. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion passes. Case number two, other business, referral from Board of Alderman on proposed O dash eighteen dash zero thirty-three, amending land use code matrix regarding self-storage facilities and sanitary landfills. I guess, Roger, you said you were gonna talk for a second on that first, or...
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Staff prepared a memo for our comments on it. Uh, an oval ordinance originated from, uh, uh, the Board of Alderman, uh, Alderman, uh, Richard Dowd is here tonight, as well as, uh, Jerry Prunier, who, I believe, was one of those, uh, individuals that was interested in this change, uh, to allow self-storage, uh, um, within a general business district, uh, within the city, uh, given certain criteria, uh, distance from the right-of-way, uh, as, as well. And staff felt that, uh, there needed to be some other criteria and we were trying to figure out a way to, um, um, insert this into an ordinance. And so, it was felt the best way of doing this would be use the, the superscript, uh, process under the conditional use permit. As we, we felt it was a process that, uh, or a change that should come to the planning board, uh, primarily when the planning board is considering a site plan and a conditional use permit to make sure that, uh, the self-storage facilities, uh, are, are, meet the requirements or setback. Uh, they are sensitive to the neighboring properties in terms of buffers, landscaping, and, uh, aesthetics, in terms of, uh, not all self-storage facilities are created equal, I should say. Some are quite ugly with orange doors, one level, uh, small, you know, just row type of, uh, if they're on a commercial corridor, uh, other users don't like to be located next to them. You know, they, they tend to be more in industrial districts, park industrial districts, uh, warehousing, heavy industrial districts. Uh, but occasionally you see some that are more mainstream. They may be two, three, or four stories, uh, high. They're all self-enclosed.
Right.
Uh, I think you'll see one in the future on your agenda for, for a different one elsewhere in the city. Uh, and they can be quite, uh, pleasant, uh, to look at, aesthetically, they're, since they're all inwardly, uh, designed, uh, you don't really see the doors on the outside. Uh, so, that you have to be able to, uh, look at these in several different ways, I guess. And this ordinance allows, uh, self-storage in a limited way in our commercial districts. Currently, they're permitted by right in the highway business district, and we felt that was a little too generous. So, on one hand, w- w- they're gonna be allowed in the GB district if this ordinance pass, but they're, they're also gonna be, have restrictions in the highway business district if this ordinance pass. So, this, I think, to a certain extent preserves, uh, the commercial viabilities of our, our major corridors in the city that have retail, because retail does, uh, preserve, uh, property tax revenues, it has a higher value. And so you wanna be able to look at having self-storage facilities behind, not right on the front, from a planning perspective.
Yeah.
That's about all I have. I know, uh, Attorney Prunier is here. Um, I, I believe he's reviewed staff recommendations, um, and if you have any questions of them, I, I, or me...
Well, right now, we, so the, the, the letter we got tonight is, sort of supersedes the one that was in the...
In the packet, yes.
So, right now you folks are recommending, I mean, the two-hundred feet from the city right-of-way, that's in the ordinance as it's currently being proposed right now.
Correct.
Right? And, um, but you're, you're recommending that they, um, have the forty-foot, li- a landscape buffer of forty feet and a, you know, waiver on the two-hundred-foot setback for non-articular right-ofways and forty-foot buffer as part of a conditional use.
Right. If we didn't have that second sentence that I inserted, that would have required it to go back to the zoning board of adjustments since this provision is within the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, uh, uh, we prefer to, I think, when you're looking at a site plan...
Right.
And a design, that's really what you need to be able to make this determination if this is gonna work or not with the conditional use permit. So if, if a waiver were to be granted, it's probably better if the planning board granted that waiver as opposed to the zoning board of adjustment. It also makes, takes it away from a two-step process.
I get it. Yeah. Okay.
This is a, a very minor point, but I think there's a, with the revised proposal, there's, there's a semicolon at the end, I think should be a comma.
Yep.
Where's that? So right here, I think it says, no negative impacts on the Butters, comma, neighborhood or the city.
Correct.
Okay. For a second, it just threw me.
Uh, Attorney Prunier or, uh, Alderman, do you, do you want anyone to come up and talk as well?
Good evening. Alderman Rick Dowd, Ward Two, and, um, live at eight Ascot Park in Ashra. I proposed, um, this ordinance, and there's a couple pieces to it. I've been working with Director Marshon and, on zoning issues across the city. Uh, two areas we're focusing on right now are Amher Street and Danny Webster Highway South. There are more zoning issues that I'm sure you've run into throughout the city. We're trying to make it, uh, a lot easier to conform and to straighten out some of the issues they've had. In this particular ordinance, the first part of it is, um, in general business, under the current zoning laws, uh, it allows for, uh, a solid waste disposal area. And nobody wants that. It was done years and years ago for a particular site, never got changed, changing it now. Second part of this is, is, um, some of our general business areas have been expanded to allow for larger general business use. And rather than arbitrarily rezoning each piece of property at this time, we wanted to make an allowance for this type of use and so that it could be controlled by the planning board. It's a conditional use. You get to hear all of the criteria and determine whether it can or can't be done and what should and shouldn't be enforced. That's much easier in the short term, gives you the control, and we don't have to go through zoning each piece of property differently. So, just wanted to, uh, hope we have your support, and it will be coming back to the board's PEDC next Tuesday. So, I'm hoping to get a positive response.
I have a question for him.
Sure, Ed, go ahead.
Um, as far as the landfill, um, right now Four Hills has a certain amount of property, but down the road, they're gonna need, they already proposing, I believe, that they're gonna be purchasing other pe- or have other pieces of property for landfill. Will this affect that?
No. No one in the planning department from Director Marshon down and the one on, I believe, on the Board of Alderman, wants to see a landfill right up against Amher Street, Danny Webster Highway South, where we have other general businesses. Can you imagine a landfill being right next to a restaurant? I don't think so. So we wanna prohibit that going forward, and it's full support of city government on that one. And we're hoping that we have the support for you on the second part of it, so that you have control over anything that goes in. Because there are some of our lots that are general business that were expanded by zoning to take a piece of, of industrial use and make it GB.
Excuse me.
And actually, this is a less intrusive use of that property, a, uh, a storage unit, storage, than say a restaurant, a gas station, you know, that would be closer to a Butters. So, we think this is a much better solution. Thank you.
I just...
Mr. Varley?
I just wanna clarify, I, I, I gather that you are supportive of the changes that planning staff is proposing to the...
Yes, and it, it allows this board to have some flexibility there. Like, um, they're suggesting forty feet. Well, if the right vegetation and buffer was done, it may be thirty feet, but that's under your control. The way the doors face, under your control. So you get to make it more aesthetic than even a zoning change could do.
Mr. Apucci?
Is there a, how does the height of these buildings work? It's just whatever is, is presently there, that those are the same requirements?
Depends where you are in, in the city on the zoning, but, uh, typically along Amher Street, you have a five-story limit, uh...
Right.
But the number of stories allowed, again, would fall on your...
But then whatever is allowed will be the same for the storage facilities, whatever is presently in, in place.
Yeah, the, the height restriction's, uh, part of the zoning.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for the Alderman?
Thank you very much.
Brunier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my name for the record is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at twenty Trafalgar Square in Ashra. Before I start, Happy New Year. To me, it'll be Happy New Year because I think I'll be coming back to see you quite a few times on zoning changes. If this is just a start, I can imagine what we're going for the year. Nashra is in a unique position at this point in time. Very little land for, for development and, uh, lot of potential for growth. Its location in the center of the southern part of the state makes it very unique. And what's happened in Ashra, as you are well aware, you're seeing it all the time, just saw our two-lot subdivision, there are little pa- little patches of land and that need development in certain areas. There are many... There are many, there's about a thousand apartments coming on this, just in this year, on doing it. They need storage. These things happen in this, this ordinance gives you the flexibility to make some changes in particular areas. And it's important that you have the flexibility, not only in this particular area, I wish you had it in the whole zoning ordinance. Because, you know, you're not getting all little rectangular, little pieces of property. You're getting pieces of property that are left over. And their properties that, they're there because no one wanted to use them before because they're difficult to develop. So by this board having the flexibility to look at those things, look at the buildings that are going on, on them, something nice can be built, the landowner wins and the city wins. I wish that we could do a whole new ordinance for the City of Nashville with flexibility to the planning staff and to this board, so that things could get done. On Amherst Street, we saw, I think, a first step a little while ago, the rezoning that allows flexible uses in the park industrial zoning, in the airport zoning, all the way up to Domain Avenue. It didn't go far enough, and it's not on both sides. There are changes that happen all the time. The internet has brought different changes, uses and so forth. You know, you used to see office buildings all the time. You don't see a lot of office buildings anymore. It's just the way it is. So when you have things changing, the board that has the final say on a lot of changes should have the flexibility to be able to handle both your responsibility to the city and to the landowner. So I look at this ordinance and I say, hmm, what do I think? Well, I think it should be passed. I believe, you know, many times I'm here opposing Roger. We've done this for 30 years, I think, Roger, you and I, on all of this stuff.
I think you've done it longer, Jerry.
I know, I've done it longer. But, you know, I've seen, really, I've done it for 50 years. And I've seen City of Nashville go. For five years, I'm on Amherst Street, for the next five years, on Daniel Webster Highway. And then I come back to Amherst Street. Amherst Street is the place now. I can guarantee you in two years, we'll be down Daniel Webster Highway with all the kind of development happening. Things change. And the city has to be able to have the flexibility to change with it and get good things done for the city. So I'm in favor of this ordinance being passed.
Ed?
I just have a quick added. Would you mind staying for our discussion time? I have a question for you, other than what this topic is.
Yeah.
Is it like 600 an hour?
No, I should hire you.
Anything else for Mr. Prunier?
Statement made by Attorney Prunier. The changes are happening, that's the way it is, and this board should be flexible to respond to those. I have to half-agree with that, because I fundamentally believe that it's this board, the legislature, the administration, they should be part of what is dictating the changes, not let the changes occur and then respond, because in the end, I don't think we end up with the right composition of what the future of the city should be.
Okay. Anybody else, discussion, question? Yeah? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion regarding favorable or unfavorable recommendation? And I guess we'd be using the, I would say, at least starting with the language that was in the packet, or in the, that was given out tonight by the planning.
I'm not sure what you.
Alderman, is that it?
So, I mean, I would make a motion to recommend a favorable, to give a favorable recommendation to 018-033 with the above-attached modification. Would you like me to read it into the record?
I think you could address it as if the amended language from the planning director on January 9th, 2019. The other letter's a different date, so you can just reference this letter if you want.
Sure. So as it's outlined, I guess the modification as it's outlined in the memorandum from Roger Houston on January 9th, 2019, to the planning board.
Yeah, I think Adam recommended maybe one change to that wording, that's last semicolon.
Be a comma.
Be a comma. Does that work for you?
Yes.
So we have that motion for favorable recommendation as indicated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion passes. Thanks. Okay, do we have any, moving on here, discussion items? Anybody?
Yeah, I had one, I just, because, I don't know if Attorney Prunier heard the, my addition for construction affidavit and its impact on residential, and I just wondered if he heard this and if he would have any input on this. We're trying to get this so it actually becomes an ordinance and so that the people coming into, coming to us to, as a resident and subdividing, that they're not unduly impacted or surprised that it's happened. Now, the applicant tonight was very favorable to any engineer affidavit. Do you understand what I mean by the construction affidavit for any engineering?
Well, the answer to your question, no. And the reason, it's interesting that you had this subdivision the same night that we come in, so you say you guys should take care of the problem with the other ordinance on this thing. That's an example of what's, times are changing. Now, if you don't take care of the particular problem, make sure drainage, as an example, you did a good job trying to get the water away from the lot next door, then it becomes Steve's problem. It comes out in the street, and now he gets calls, you know? And that's why sometimes I get a little bit concerned that he talks a little bit too much about drainage. But I also know that if it doesn't come out right, he's the guy that's going to get the telephone calls.
I don't talk enough about it. You should come to more meetings.
Yeah, one of the things that we are, you know, that I've been concerned, and our board has been concerned, that we, the impact of having a civil engineer look at it after or while it's being built, and the cost of that added to the homeowner or the applicant, you know?
There's no question that the cost in housing and building has been increased dramatically by the government. The government, I mean, all the various boards. However, it's a balance. You know, you want to see things happen, but you also, on the other hand, want to make sure that people are protected. And you have a tremendous responsibility, and you do a good job with it. The responsibility is both to the city and to the landowner. You can't say to the city, ah, you don't like it? Okay, we're going to do, no, no, no. The city, the landowner has a right. He has a piece of property, pays taxes on it. As long as he follows the rules and regulations and doesn't affect adversely the neighbors, then he should be able to develop his piece of property. And I can go on forever, you know that. But I just want to just tell you that I think that especially in areas like this, just a two-lot subdivision, but in an area that the drainage is very important to not only the city but to the landowner, that that's a good idea to, after the construction, have someone look at it to make sure that it's been constructed according to the plans and regulations. Because not all builders always follow plans and so forth.
Thank you.
You know, I.
I appreciate it. It's important that we get feedback from the engineering that's outside of our.
I don't think you need it on every plan.
No.
But I think that you should have the ability, when there is a particular plan like this, to be able to say, this is added as another stipulation that we want done, and have the ability to do that.
My process is that I want to get it into pre, so that a person coming into, the applicant comes in, they know ahead of time that this is going to be there, that they have, you know, that any engineering that's not a permitted engineered thing, not like a retaining wall is a permitted thing, but it's still engineered, but it's a permitted one, whereas the infiltration stuff, erosion control blankets, this stuff here, the catch basin on the property, is an engineered, and it's not a permitted one, so nobody's going to check it unless it's an engineered. So that's a purpose, so that they know ahead of time, and it's not a surprise, oh, I wasn't expecting that cost.
No, I think it should be made, the ability should be made so that you can put it on as a stipulation. And it's not a knock against the engineer that's presenting the plan.
Oh.
Because he presents it to you, gets it approved, and he may, that's the end, he never sees it again.
Right.
Some builder comes in, builds it, doesn't build it according to the plan, then that causes the city the problems.
And the homeowners next to them, like we had tonight.
Yeah, maybe the homeowner has to pay a little bit more for the house because of the cost. However, he's got the protection of someone looking at it, making sure that the house was built according, or the building was built according to what was approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Jerry.
You're welcome.
Do you have an update on, I mean, I sent the language in that I sort of recommended. I know that that was being reviewed by the city and legal and stuff like that. Where's that at?
Yep, I was going to give you an update on that. So over the past few weeks, I've been sending out emails to engineers who regularly appear before us, as well as some developers, to get their input and feedback on that. So as of, actually yesterday, I just got the last one from one of the developers. So staff is going to be meeting on, I think, Tuesday. We have a meeting set up, and we're going to go through the emails and the suggestions and the questions that they had. And then we will be bringing it, you know, to the planning board shortly, but we just kind of want to go through all the comments that they have.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Oh, please don't take this up during the, I'm not going to be here in January, the last January meeting, so I appreciate being there.
I think this is the last.
This is the last January meeting.
Oh, no, it's not. You have your election, that's the last one. Oh, I know what it is. It's the second February meeting. I'm going to be going to the, in RPC, which is scheduled for the same night as ours.
That's when we're going to take it up.
Yeah, we'll have it that time, for sure. Jerry, you got a.
I do have just one question about this that, after ready, what you put in. I'm not really following the ordinance piece of this. I'm not, I think it's perfectly fine. I think we, as a board, have the authority to do this.
Yeah.
Strictly on our own, just like we did tonight. You make the, you make the stipulation that we have, absolutely, we have, absolutely have the power to do that. So to me, the only real thing is, we get our language squared away, which tonight sounded perfect to me. That's pretty much exactly what we want the stipulation to say. And we simply have, we simply show people the courtesy of notifying them that this is our intention.
Right.
Through, through the planning process. They get notified. But I'm not sure where the concept that we need an ordinance to do this.
I don't think we do.
Comes into play.
I think you're right. I agree.
Because if we raise ordinance, I think that's a huge process, where we just look at it and say, you know what, we all agree, this is the right thing to do? This is what we're going to do.
It was just a concept that I was thinking that.
Okay.
Might be good, but it's, like you're saying, it doesn't need to be. My only bigger concern is that it's not a surprise that it's part of the applicant as they come in, it's part of their packet, they see it, they know ahead of time that their engineers, when they come, and then they bring it to their engineers, that engineer knows it and sees it, that somebody's going to need to inspect it. As long as it's not a surprise, I'm 100% happy with doing it just here.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Unless, unless there might be something that could be challenged about it in court, and go back to a discussion, Jerry, that you, after me, on why can the engineering department do this? Why couldn't a private applicant challenge us the same way? Why doesn't, why you putting the burden on me? Why doesn't the engineering department do it? See, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want our engineering department, I would never be, I would want it to be always like we have in, when they have a housing development, that the roads going through, that their third party inspects the road, not the city. And so this part, the engineer who's stamping it, or an inspectional licensed engineer does it, it's never on the city to do this inspection of the stuff that's there.
You know, what you said happened a while ago, right? And I was really.
I don't forget much.
And since that conversation, as I read the laws and the rules, I, the difference is now, I became convinced that we don't need anybody's permission to do that. We absolutely have the power to stipulate that if we decide to. I didn't understand that then, when we had that first conversation. But after educating myself on it, I'm convinced we do. We can require that of someone.
No, that's not the piece I'm saying. What I'm saying is that, just like you asked of that request, I can see somebody saying, well, you have engineering staff, why am I going to incur $10,000 when I'm, you know?
Because we're telling you have to.
Because it's your project. I mean, yes, I'm on the side that you were on before, but now I kind of get it, is what I'm trying to do.
What's the consistency?
Is that defendable?
Is, you know, if we have the authority under the ordinance to do that, then we're doing it, we can do it.
Yeah.
The good thing is you can tailor your stipulation to fit the site. There may be other, like tonight, you know, you might have different issues at every site, but you might want to tailor that stipulation to address. If you do an ordinance, it's just, you know, that's a boilerplate, you'd have to apply it in every situation. Whereas if you're looking at it case-by-case basis, which some of these sites have different problems, different issues.
Right.
That you have to look at to make sure that you're covered.
Is there any way that we can have simple, like we, like Adam did tonight, the language written out?
I already did. I already sent that around to you guys.
Yeah, so, yeah, I got it, you know? But I'm just saying.
That's being reviewed by the city right now.
Right, but I'm saying the language, when we do a stipulation, that it's simplified and we can just follow that.
That is.
Right, that's what you did. Okay, well, it didn't have any unpermitted, see? It needs to be added.
Yeah, but I mean, once we get the comments back, we'll take a look at, dialing that in, kind of like we did with the sidewalks. Okay, anything else on discussion for this meeting? No? All right, anybody make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Apucci. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that meeting is adjourned at 9:08. So we have, in our.
One second. I have to turn this off.
It's a recording. We have to turn it off and turn it back on, so we have two different discs.
Yeah, I get it. You good?
Yep.
Will you, are we, have something else to do?
We just have an annual meeting, I'm going to call.
Just the election of officers.
So I'm going to now call to order the annual meeting of January 10th, 2019, City of Nashville Planning Board.